I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting, May 21. First public hearing is 11 Washington Street, Joanna Shields, Matthew Porter.
I represent Joanna Shields and Matthew Porter, who own 11 Washington Street. And I'm with you tonight with Pat Sullivan, John Sloman, who is the buyer, proposed buyer of this property.
Which property? The new parcel A or lot three?
What I asked you to do tonight is combine those meetings, the 6 o'clock, 11, and also 1:15. I think that's sort of combined because really the plan, I'd like to ask you to combine them.
I think they were separate applicants. It's okay.
Well, it's separate applicant, but the information is basically the same in terms of...
I do think we need to keep them separate though, in case someone shows up for a later meeting, although they're both at six.
They're both at six.
At 6 o'clock, that's the only reason we're saying that.
Yeah, I guess it's fine with me. We can proceed that way if there's some objection to it for some reason, or Mike change voice on that.
So with that said, I'd like to introduce Pat Sullivan, who is the head of the roof there in this group here, and he's the takeover board, making the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Sullivan. As Mike said, I'm an attorney as well with an office in North Adamnaburo, and I represent 15 Wash LLC and its manager, John Sloman, who's with us here tonight. I'm glad that the board is open to combining these hearings, because in essence what we have is a land exchange proposal. So just a little overview explanation. My client acquired this 18-unit residential building shown as on there. It's in essence lot one shown on the plan. And he has, at that point, it gets close to about 60,000 square feet. In essence, what he's looking to do is acquire parcel A shown on that plan from the neighbors, Joanna and Matthew, and he's going, in turn, going to convey parcel B to them. So the land exchange is our client would acquire parcel A, they would acquire parcel B, and then we would have an A and R subdivision plan for my client, which would then be, well, obviously with the planning board afterwards, in which he would create lot one and lot two out of that, which you see on there. Joanna and Matthew will retain their house shown as lot three, which again may add parcel B to it. So that's the overall picture of what's going on, a land exchange, which we think is beneficial to the site, but it obviously requires some forms of relief. This is in a commercial zoning district. Both of these lots would be pre-existing non-conforming lots as residential dwellings in the commercial zoning district, and as such to alter a pre-existing lot, any nonconformities we need to get relief for. So the first one for lot three is on frontage. So the frontage, current frontage for the Shields property is 60 feet of frontage. We're actually increasing the frontage by 42.97 feet. So you end up with a total frontage of, I believe that, I had that figure right here, 103.17. So we're actually increasing the frontage on that lot, which we think is beneficial, but it is still less than the 125 feet required. Your bylaw allows for a reduction in the frontage to at least 80 feet, 80% of the frontage requirement, which is what we exceed. So we think that this is beneficial in that really it's only adding to the frontage of that lot. On a previous version of the plan, this looks to be the updated plan, we exchanged a few different plans administratively through your office, but this one has the 100 feet of frontage. In a previous iteration, it had less than 100 feet of frontage. So if you read our memorandum...
Width?
Lot width, I apologize, I said frontage. The lot width. So our memorandum speaks to seeking relief. We had 97 feet, I believe it was, showing as lot width. We were able to redesign that just to capture the 100 feet, so we didn't need relief there. So the first form of relief on lot three, again, is the frontage, and we're, again, confirming that we're actually increasing that frontage by 42 feet. And then the second form of relief that we're requesting is the garage. Nothing is happening with the garage. This is in essence a Section 6 finding, because we're altering a pre-existing nonconforming use, that the garage setback, I apologize, I think it's 15 feet. So the garage setback really needs to be 15 feet. That's grandfathered in until you alter the pre-existing nonconforming use. So we need relief for that. Basically, our reconfiguration of the lot does not make that setback more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I would propose to the board, it is the minimalist impact. We really couldn't see, respectfully, any difference that the land exchange would have to the fact, what impact that would have on the fact that that garage is 12.2 feet set off from the side yard setback, as opposed to 15 feet. Really no impact there. The rest of the lot conforms. It has in excess of the minimum lot size requirement. It meets all the side yard, rear setbacks, all of that. So it's just on the frontage waiver and the side yard setback on the garage. Again, those are both Section 6 findings. Well, no, one's a lot frontage exemption, and then on the garage, it would be a Section 6 finding. On lot one, this is really just to alter a pre-existing nonconforming use, because this is an 18-unit residential structure in a commercial zoning district, in which we are changing the lot configuration. Here, the two proposed lots, lot one and lot two, are going to have in excess of the frontage requirements. They're going to have in excess of the minimum lot size requirements. They're going to meet all side yard, rear setbacks. They're conforming in every way, except for the fact that we are altering the pre-existing nonconforming structure, which you have a provision in your ordinance for such a change in subsection 528A, 520C, and it lists a criteria for which you can alter a pre-existing noncon... or why you would issue a special permit to alter a pre-existing nonconforming use that speaks to the social, economic, or community needs, traffic flow and safety, adequacy of utilities, other public services, neighborhood character, visual impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, qualities of the natural environment, effects of the proposed use on neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odors, smoke, noise, potential fiscal impact. Basically, the gist of this is, you know, I think the language, respectfully, in the bylaw speaks more to a special permit for a use. There's nothing that we could see here in seeking to alter the lot that really would have any type of impact like this. What we're requesting is that his 18-unit residential structure is going to have less land than it previously had. That's the really only impact. How that's going to impact traffic, or noise, or anything that the special permit criteria speaks to, respectfully, it's not going to have any impact on that. All the parking is the same. We have in excess of the land that's serving that 18-unit property. So it still is a, you know, functioning site and really doesn't have, you know, the analysis is by losing that excess land, which is our alteration, does that create any of these impacts? And I would respectfully submit to the board that it should have no impact in those listed criteria. So that's the summary of what's going on, so you can interpret the plan in the land exchange. And then just a rundown of the forms of release that we're requesting. I know that you have the public here tonight, would, any questions from the board or from the public would be happy.
Yeah, I'm going to, if you're done with your presentation, I'm going to have board members first ask, and then we're going to open it up to the public.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks. One thing I noticed is that Sunset Acres abuts your property here. And as I was looking at the application, I was interested, I never noticed it before, but there is something here about overlay districts. This is in our application. It says overlay districts like groundwater protector district, flood zone type of loads on, and senior village, okay? So I guess senior village is something that is of a particular interest for these applications. So I'm going to say to you that this over 55 community is de facto a senior village. And so your proposal is abutting a senior village, and I think we have to be much more careful as we consider, even though it's a commercial zone, you know, you have residential people in front of you, but more importantly, you have Sunset Acres behind you.
Understood.
So we have to be more careful. The thing that really surprises...
Just to interrupt you on that, so you're saying Sunset Acres is a 55 and over community, or?
Yeah, that's what the sign says when I drove in it.
But it's not a senior village, it's in the section of the bylaw.
I know it's not.
Okay, that's fine.
I know that you did not satisfy the, your criteria of senior village, but what I'm trying to say is it is over 55, and therefore I consider it a place for elderly who live.
Oh, it is, yeah, but it doesn't fall under that section of the bylaw that you were referring to.
Understood. If I can continue.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I was surprised that this application really has no detail on how lot two is going to be used. And I have to tell you, I've been on this committee for three and a half years, and as far as I'm concerned, it's not typical. Usually we'll see things about, we'll see plot plans, we'll see engineering diagrams, we'll see a number of things so that we can assess the impact to the neighborhood. And I don't see how I can do that, and matter of fact, it's impossible for me to do that, given the information that's not in this thing.
Just a second, so none of that was submitted? There's no elevations in the building?
If I could respond to it...
Go ahead.
I just want to do it one at a time, so I don't get lost with the...
So Ray, maybe I can give an overview of how we got here.
Yep.
Joe, do you have the GIS? Can you pull that up?
Yep.
So people can see what we're talking about. This will help, hopefully this will help everybody explain what we're doing, if you can just bear with me for a minute, if that's okay with the attorneys.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I tried to give, a bit of an overview.
I'm just...
Our time here now, so...
So we're going to pull up the aerial, so you can see what we're looking at, maybe a little more clearly.
A little more zoomed in.
15. Since we've combined these meetings, I would also like to have Joanna Shields and Matthew Porter at least say that they're here and present. Okay, thank you.
You pull up the aerials, Sujo.
Yep.
Who does it way better than I used to do?
You just like having people come on.
Get rid of the sidebar, there you go. Get rid of the other one, Sujo.
I'm sorry?
Get rid of the one on the left, too. Just pop out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
By the way.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Where's the pool?
So, okay, so what happened, let me just give you some background of the site. Mr. Lot Sloman came to me probably a year ago, asking about self-storage units behind the apartment building that he owns. And as you can see here, these are the old existing lot lines that are on here. And the lot in the back has 56 feet of frontage, so it's not a conforming lot. So after discussion with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Sloman, if he wants to go ahead with anything there, we wanted to break out an additional lot, so that it was a conforming lot. So this plan breaks out the lot. What this plan doesn't do is put anything on that lot. It just creates a lot. Now, because the apartment building is 24 units, that's a nonconforming use. So he can't do anything to that lot without coming to the board for relief, because it's nonconforming. And by that lot, I mean 7A and 7B. So both of those parcels in the back that they currently own are combined as far as zoning goes.
So it's a nonconforming by, because of use?
Because of use. It's nonconforming because of use. The lot conforms itself if combined, because they're combined under zoning, but the use doesn't conform. So what they want to do is put the apartment use on a lot, so that is on a separate lot, and then create another lot that conforms. So basically, they're jiggering around the frontage, so that middle lot with 56 frontage feet will now have 120 feet, and that will now be a buildable lot. And then the people next door, the Shields, the Pores, well, they've got, as you can see, their floor is an oversized lot. They'll cut that off, so that lot conforms to zoning, and we'll give them more frontage, so that they'll have a legal lot for their existing house. So there's nothing planned for that lot, other than to give them more frontage as part of this land swap, so that they have a better lot.
Well, it'll still be nonconforming, though, right? Because you don't have...
No, if you give them the exception, so if you give them the exception, which isn't a variance...
That's not a pre-existing nonconforming.
Then it will become conforming with this, with this vote, if the board decides to go ahead with it. If they don't, then it will stay with less frontage. So this application, going back to Rick's point, why it doesn't show anything on there is because all we're doing here is trying to create a second lot that's in the back. Well, it could be used for buildings.
But it does show, it shows a 12-type.
It does show it, but it could be anything. So there's no restrictions. So the zoning allows for other uses as well. You could put housing there, whatever. They've indicated they want to put self-storage units, but we haven't seen an official application yet. That application would have to go to the planning board. It'd be another public hearing. The planning board would look at the entrance, the lighting, the hours operation, the screening, fencing, all the things, the details, typically the drainage, you know, all those things would be part of the planning board application, is a totally separate permit, if that goes forward. So this just sets up the lots, so they can do that. If the board doesn't want to do this, then they don't have to. This is a discretionary permit, but this is the first step. If they want to go ahead and try and put something there, the first step is to get the lot lines in place. The next step would be to go to the planning board for a use that requires a special permit. If it's a larger use, if it's a small use, and they just want to put a house, a single family or duplex there, something like that wouldn't need a special permit. If they wanted to put a childcare center there, that wouldn't require a special permit. But most of the things that are noisier or bigger...
So that's a special permit from the planning board?
From the planning board, yes. Those are from the planning board. So this is phase one, and then there'll be a phase two, most likely, if they go ahead with the self-storage units, which is what they're attempting.
We're not, if we were to grant this, we're not giving them permission to build.
No. They have no permission to build anything, yes.
Yeah, but Mike, I guess my point is...
It conforms to zoning.
My point is...
So there's the potential to build. You're good, sorry.
Okay. If I may say, court by law 520 says that's the responsibility of the ZBA to make sure that there are, it's there are no detrimental impacts to the neighborhood, including visual impacts, lighting, odors, smoke, noise, and other nuisances. So in ways, we have seen other cases where property lines have changed. We have said to the developer, okay, no, you have to tell us more. As a matter of fact, one of the first projects that took place, actually the last project that took place before I joined, I guess it turned into a bit of a shouting match, because the developer felt he shouldn't have to do it, because it's his property, and a butters came and said, no, we're not happy with it. And he had to make certain concessions that became conditions of approval before the project can concede, can continue. So I guess my point is, you know, one of the things that's here is that, you know, you should have to, is there a reasonable alternative available? My question to you is, why didn't you just wait to file this until you knew what you were going to do with the property?
It's a complicated procedural background, that in essence, the main hurdle is that there's a mortgage, as would be typical on a residential property. And so in order for my client to acquire the land of his neighbor, we need to get a partial release on those mortgages, so that he can acquire the land with good title.
Sorry.
So, there's a couple things. So procedurally, we need to obtain those from, we need to obtain partial releases on the mortgage, mortgages on those property. In order to do that, we need to have a, their lot needs to be conforming. If we were to, you can't subdivide the property without asking for the relief. So my client is in the position of, if I'm going to buy my neighbor's land, I need to get those partial releases on the mortgages, and I can't get those partial releases until I make their lot conforming. Their bank would not issue a partial release on their mortgage unless myself or Attorney Dugan sent them an attorney's opinion letter saying, yes, even after you convey this parcel to your neighbor, your lot still remains conforming. In order for us to do that, we need the relief here. So for my client to proceed with all the site development, engineering work that would be required, where the banks could simply say administratively, we're not going to issue partial releases on the mortgages, he could spend $50,000, $100,000 in engineering just to get denied the opportunity to be able to buy the neighbor's land. So we need to take it incrementally. You do see, you know, a schematic foundation plan on there, which, as Chris disclosed it, nobody's hiding anything. There's been conversations about self-storage. Truthfully, my client doesn't know, this has gone on for some time, and he doesn't know what he's going to do with it. He could hold on to it for 15, 20 years, which respectfully, I understand, you know, the line of questioning, and it is a good line of questioning. The truth is, we don't know what's going to happen there, and that what we're trying to do is create this conforming lot. That second lot is going to be a conforming lot. There's just procedural steps to it, that we don't know what's going to go there, and we have to take it incrementally and get the mortgage discharged, partial release.
Can I just say more things?
Yeah.
Also, on behalf of Joanna and Matt, as powerful as the board is, the banks is holding all the cards. We have to get a partial release from the bank. Even if the board says, yes, it's a great idea, why not do it? This can still be blown apart by the banks. If we don't get a partial release...
Yeah, well, that's not our, I understand the complications, but it's not our concern. So I'm going to interrupt you.
I hope that answers it, though. That's the response for why he hasn't gone much further.
One question about the strategy, though, on this. Why didn't you just make the lot frontage over here on lot three, the 125? You've got plenty of frontage for three lots.
I don't...
Did we explore that, or?
Pull it up.
The question was why?
162 feet of...
Too many here, 56 here.
Was lot three?
Well, it says total 103, the proposed.
Oh, because they wanted to get the backland from lot three.
I got it.
And you can't give them the backland from lot three if the frontage, it doesn't conform. So it made sense to...
That's what I'm saying. We have enough frontage for three lots.
It's not...
So there's no variance required for...
Oh, because if you kick it over, it impacts the driveway, I think, on the front of the apartments. So we wanted to cut that down to 80%, because it seemed to make, it's more than what's there, so it's obviously safe.
Yep.
And the fire department's concerned of getting into the apartments a little bit. So when the planning board goes to look at the second entrance, we want to give them more room, it seemed like a safer approach.
Could I just offer, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, but we keep referring to the planning board, and I think that's part of it, that, you know, likely the use here is going to need a special permit with, you know, another crack at it. I had looked at, you know, the bylaws, if it were self-storage, I know that's planning, I'd assume there probably are other pending, unless maybe this is more planning board heavy with special permitting authority. But it's also very possible, I think in the bylaw, that a special permit for the use could be that before this board as well.
Yeah. I mean, if we were in fact talking about self-storage, if we were in fact talking about self-storage, then that would be, require a special permit. The planning board could do their job, and I'm sure they are extremely competent in making sure that the neighborhood is protected, okay? My concern is, I look at the use regulation schedule for District CB, here's a couple of things that you could do that is a permitted use, not requiring a special permit. Child care center, business retail, wholesaling, business offices, a restaurant indoor, and school, private, or nursery, or other. So my question, not only to you, but also to Chris or to Ray, is if we approve this, okay, and they decide that they're going to go another direction and choose a use of this property that is permitted for this district, does the planning board have the same leverage to be able to enforce the neighborhood, to make sure that it's, that neighborhood's not impacted?
So, do you want me to answer that?
I mean, my, if you would like, my offer too would be, likely those uses would require site plan approval at a minimum, never mind, those might be by right, but they're probably going to require minimum...
Yeah, even if they're by right, you do drainage and all the other stuff. You have to do drainage and all sorts of other site plans.
Site plan approval would look at most of those issues. The standard of approval is a little lower than a special permit. So most of the more noxious uses require a special permit, a smaller, smaller uses would be site plan approval. I mean, the permitted uses would probably be site plan approval. And if they, and if they go over a certain size, it would trigger another special permit, unless it was an accepted use, like a childcare center or a school or something.
So it sounds as though they would have the ability to control some aspects of the development, but not as much as a special permit?
If it's a larger project, and I think we talked a little bit about if it's, I think it's more than six parking spaces, they'd fall, they'd probably have to come under 500-39. So if you go to 500-39, I don't know if you have zoning in front of you or not, that's site plan approval, so that's triggered. I have it, that's for any building more than 1,000 square feet, or any parking, six or more spaces. And the standard of review is proper drainage, safe access, acceptance of the design layout of ways, traffic review, lighting, not have a detrimental effect on abutting neighborhoods and resources that applies to the master, master plan of open space. It's basically a design review, as opposed to a discretionary permit. So a special permit is discretionary, it takes four out of five votes, as here. A site plan is three out of five votes, and you look at it for safety and neighborhood issues, sort of planning issues. And if it meets those, then the board would generally have to approve it, if it doesn't trigger any special permits. But the larger projects would kick up and probably trigger a special permit, so.
Okay, so here's my, I think my...
So that's, so there's different standards for different levels of buildings.
My last question here is that during my homework for this project, I came across our bylaw, chapter 810, which is rules are adopted by the zoning board of appeals, and 810-8 says that the board is the special permitting authority for all uses authorized in chapter 500. And then it says, "The applicant shall submit sufficient information clearly and factually supported to justify the issue of the permit. The applicant shall, the applicant shall, one, identify the particular use and extent of the activity proposed for the land in the building, if any. Two, show that the authorization sought will be desirable and without substantial detriment to the public good." And again, I'm going to say is, I don't see the, any information about the particular use and the extent of the activity here.
I need to know the context of the bylaw that you cite, but that's not, these are, in essence, Section 6 findings are lot frontage exemption. There isn't a proposed use, that's not the subject of the hearing. So I'd submit that we have a fully complete application. I understand and respect the line of questioning, but there is no proposed use here. What we're seeking to do is alter pre-existing nonconforming uses that results in lot one still remaining conforming in the commercial zoning district, lot two still remaining conforming in the commercial zoning district, lot three with increased frontage, and the only other form of relief is asking for keeping the garage where it is, which the loss of land in the back plays no impact on the garage sitting 12 feet back instead of 15 feet back. So I don't think that the application is deficient in any way. I understand you've had other... I understand you've had other applications before this board where they know what they're gonna do, and they have that proposed before you, and it's very good information for the board to have, but this is not deficient in any way, and they have every right to propose a subdivision of the land, and if there's pre-existing non-conformities, these are very minimal forms of relief that we're looking for.
Would you be willing to add a condition to approval that says that either you must build self-storage or some other language that would ensure that the planning board could do their review as if, as, as a special permit?
So I, of course, being honest with you, when I say that he is not certain whether he is going to do self-storage or not, so I don't think that we could submit to a condition that would require him to, to, to apply for self-storage. If it were, you know, some other use that was allowed by right, we have not, in truth, we've not considered the other uses, except maybe a nursery lands. But there are other uses that are required, you know, the discretion is, if it's a special permit, we are going to request a special permit, and likely the planning board will be the special permit granting authority, and they're gonna have every requirement on there that needs to be met. And the abutters would have another chance to speak to that as well. If it was a site plan approval, then we're gonna submit for site plan approval and all of the review that that entails as well. So, but if it, the proposal, if I understand it, is that he would, you know, be required to submit for self-storage. I don't think we could submit to a condition like that.
Okay. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, I think part of the confusion here is having the building on there. If we're not talking about the building.
We're not talking about the building.
Right, exactly. It's really, everything is about the subdivision of the land.
No, I get it. You've got a building on there.
Right. Just, Joe just had a, so the section of the zoning regulations are just regulations, they're not bylaws or anything, I don't believe. The use by this planning board, under 519, changed in 2017. So that, that supersedes anything you were just reading, as far as that. So if it's, if it's related to a special permit on the table, the planning board has that review. Because what we wanted to do was consolidate the reviews with one board and have them specialize in it. We had people before who were bouncing in between boards and, and getting half of the one board and half of the other board. It was a mess. You couldn't get a good project, because you had so many fingers in the pie. So that was changed in 2017.
Yep.
So just, just to go back, because obviously you're concerned about this, and I understand the neighbors are concerned, everybody's concerned. So if we can go back to the GIS for a minute. And, and again, I tried to put this down in the draft decision, just as I always do, for you just to look at the issues. So if you look at what I'd written, there's, there's no construction proposed, so the impacts that you're looking at, lighting, traffic, there's none from this. All we're doing is changing lot lines. However, if you go to, you go to number, on the one for number 15, if you go to Condition 8, or finding, was it Finding?
Finding 8, yeah.
Finding 8. I think that gets to the, to the crux of the poem. If, it's clear there's a mobile home park there, there's a lot of residents, all the boards in town wanna, wanna look out for your interests, we wanna care for you. The applicant has a right to come before the boards. The boards have a right to hear public input, which you will have. I know I'm talking a lot, but just, I don't talk to the whole meeting. But you have, you have a right to public input, and the board's gonna listen to what you have to say, and they may or may not agree with you, but you have, everybody has a right to have their, their say. So the issue here, the changing the lot lines by itself has no impacts on anything, and that's all they're asking for now. This board has to do its job, other boards have to do their jobs. However, if you're uncomfortable giving the planning board that, or thinking that there might be impacts, that don't have to go to the planning board, then you would, you would make a determination that you've got a non-conforming use, it's 24 units, it's on a lot, the lot should remain the same size that it is, because you feel that land is important for buffer, and you would have grounds to turn this down if you wanted to do so. That's the approach I think you should take if you, if you are not comfortable with this. If you're, if you are okay with it going forward, then you could, you could come up with a decision similar to what I'd written. If you're not, you could very easily, I think, make a determination that that land is necessary for a buffer zone. Nothing can be done on that lot really until it comes back to the CVA again. And we haven't heard from the public yet, but they have a right to come before us, we have a right to listen, and that's, I'm trying to, that's why you haven't seen the other stuff, because that's typically gonna be set aside. If you don't want to give the planning board a chance, or the applicant a chance to have a conforming lot, then you, you would just say, I feel that this lot is overburdened, that buffer zone is needed for the abutters, and, and I'm uncomfortable granting any change to the lot lines. If that, if that clears it up for you a little bit.
Yeah.
At the risk, lit logical argument, would you agree that that makes sense as the attorney, or?
Two comments. One is somewhat of an aside, but I thought you were gonna point to a perhaps a proposed condition in the written decision. It sounded like you were going in that direction.
And that was a finding.
Finding, not a condition.
Finding.
Okay. If there was one of important reference, I'd be curious to hear what you would cite.
What, a condition?
Was there a condition or a finding that you were gonna raise to, I'm sorry, I didn't have the board member's name.
Rick Gillett.
Rick, Mr. Gillett. I took it that's where you were going.
The only, the only draft condition I had put in was that it remains 24-unit building.
Got it.
Not be, not be, don't come back for more.
Okay.
There was no, because basically, it's just lot lines. So either, either it's gonna go to the planning board for review, or it's not gonna go to the planning for review. You can go either way. But that's why you're not seeing anything here, because there's nothing being built.
Although in the rectangle, it's on the plan. And that's what's causing the confusion. Anyway, let's move on.
Mike, if I could, Mr. Chair, but the second comment there then was just that if that were the case, you know, other than just saying, I think that this needs to be there for the buffer, really, the discretionary review for this board is that what we are proposing, you need to make a finding that it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and there needs to be some evidence or substance to that. It couldn't just be, well, our preference is to leave it as is. Respectfully, you know, what we are seeking is a finding that what we are proposing is not substantially more detrimental, and that's the threshold discretionary review, that if the board feels differently, then the board can make that finding that it is substantially detrimental.
Okay. I'm gonna move on a little bit here. Dale, if you'd like to.
I have a question.
No questions?
Nothing for me.
Not really a question, but more of clarity on some of the findings. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, and they don't, they don't conflict. Finding four.
You might wanna go over those after we hear from.
Okay.
I'll look, just, just a morally thing, I think, is I wanna see what.
And just to be clear, I gave, I gave a draft, because again, it's just to kind of clarify my mind, is what the.
Like yours?
So, I don't want people to feel pressured one way or the other on this.
Well, it may relate to Rick's point.
No, it's not. I'm gonna take it.
So, so finding, draft finding four shows, or references that the two parcels have merged into one under zoning. So I just wanna.
That would be on Lot 3?
Lot.
7A and 7B.
7A and 7B. And that would include eventually Lot 2 that they'd be purchasing from Lot 3, correct?
No, 7A and 7B would merge, because if you look at the GIS, because 7B doesn't have adequate frontage, so it's non-conforming, and they're under common ownership. So those merge.
Accessor's lot, okay.
Right.
Yeah, assessors. And so then, those merge, so the, the new lots will conform to zoning with, after the front, if a front exemption is granted.
Right. But if they've, if they've merged, or they held on the same zoning, zoning stipulations, so like, they could potentially come in and put two residential units in this lot?
Not now, because it doesn't have frontage.
If we change the lot lines.
If you change the lot lines, they could put a duplex in there, is one of the options that would need a permit from the planning board.
Right. Okay. That's all I need, that's all clarity I needed, so.
They could also do a retail business up to a certain size and other things, though.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't merged into one lot, so that this is all one.
They'll be merged into three lots. One, two will be here.
Right. But if they, if they were merged into one lot in, in, like, holistically, they couldn't put anything here, because they already have 24 units.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, they could if they came for variance.
If they came in.
But as is, what we're looking at, that's what I want clarity on.
If we, if you, if you turn this down, they can't come back. Again, I've got two attorneys here, so I gotta be careful. My understanding is they can't come back, they can't change anything on that, on either of those lots without another special permit hearing before this board. Do you agree with that? Mostly, you can do interior renovations and stuff, but.
Unless we shut it, associate.
Yeah, yeah. So they're limited in what they can do.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to the attendance here. I don't know how many people want to speak, but if you could raise your hand, stand up, come up to the microphone, or if you can project well, that's fine. Let me start with you, sir.
I don't like it.
Go.
All right. Do I have to move the microphone?
Well, we just have to hear you.
I'm too loud.
And we need to know your name, so.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Flanagan, and we are Sunset Acres.
Okay.
We are the amount of people from Sunset Acres who showed up with just a few hours of notice of this meeting. Future meetings, hopefully, we'll get the notice sooner, and there'll be more.
Well, a few hours of notice today, because this meeting is scheduled, hang on, hang on. It's scheduled for April 16th.
That's a separate topic, the notice of today's meeting, that's a separate topic. I'm not suggesting.
Okay. Just let me finish. Please let me finish.
Certainly.
So we had the notices sent out for the April 16th meeting. At that meeting, it was continued. There, there isn't a subsequent notice after that for any of these things, so.
So the meeting today, there was no notice of?
Not a whole new set of notices, no.
Okay.
Other than what's on, other than what's on the website and stuff like that, and the minutes, or and the, the meeting itself, we, since there wasn't enough members, was our, our deficiency to having the members here, so it had to be continued, so it couldn't be heard.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm gonna move on just a little bit here.
Sure.
So this gentleman that owns this, you know, obviously, it's his property has a right to do the process that's required to do what he wants to do, or to try to do what he wants to do. But I think that to suggest that all we're doing is redefining the lots is maybe, it's a little scary to us, because once it's redefined, it opens it up. Right now, we don't know where the plan is, and the gentleman says that he doesn't know what the plan is, and we're gonna be severely impacted. And that's up to us to judge, not just a document. You're right on our border there, and the noise, the water, the lighting, property values in our part, all of it, is gonna be dramatically affected by what happens to that section over there. And I don't think it's fair for you to redesign those lots until we know what he's gonna do going forward. And I apologize that, you know, I understand it's your land, and you, and you want to do something with it. I'm just hoping that it could be more clear.
Yeah.
Before you open the can of worms.
So just on that issue, these things get to be pretty arcane trying to figure them out, and this, this mention that we're just talking about lot lines is because that's what we have control over, as this board.
That's.
So in order to build anything, other than a duplex, is what, you can build just by pulling a building permit after this happened, anything else other than a duplex would require a special permit from the planning board. So it's a whole nother level of review of the building, the lighting, the traffic, that's all those things that we're not discussing tonight, because that's not in our purview to do that. So that's, just to explain, I'm not trying to discount what you're saying, or try to say that, you know, but that, that's how the process goes.
Those are, those are open meetings as well, so this wouldn't be your last opportunity, opportunity to talk.
So just to clarify, Ray, and I don't wanna.
No, go ahead.
Show up and be a pain. It's not just the duplex. We talked about before, there's other uses that are allowed by right. So, so if it's a larger use, it needs a special permit. If it's a smaller use, then it's got to, it's permitted. So for instance, permitted uses.
Large or smaller?
That zone.
Be nothing, there would be nothing on lot two.
Thousand square feet.
If it's, if it's, if it's over a certain size, it needs a site, site plan. But for, for permitted uses, we have things like childcare center, funeral home, home occupation, retail business.
You could build a funeral home without site plan approval?
No, you would need site plan approval, yeah, yeah.
There's another pie at the apple.
But there's, yeah, there's, it's, if it's over a certain size, it'll need site plan approval.
A duplex wouldn't?
Duplex would, yeah.
But doesn't it all start with redefining?
Absolutely, yeah, that's the process.
Don't you have to get that done first?
No, they need to have the lots set first, and then they have, then they have.
Yes, they do. That's the first step of the puzzle.
Yeah, the man in the blue shirt, if you could identify yourself and.
The first step of the puzzle is to change the lots. Without that, there's no sale, you're not building anything.
That's correct, that's what I said.
So it's important to have an idea of what's going on, in other words, how much development is happening. Not only that, it's unclear exactly. That pull-up or printout you had of the way the lot's gonna change was extremely confusing.
Yes.
Yeah, how does that, how does that relate to the first photo? It's difficult to follow.
Is this accurate? Can I share this with the folks?
But the first piece of the puzzle is to change the lot. You're not doing anything if you're not changing the lot.
I think that's what I explained when I, when I, when I started, I said the first.
Right, I understand that, but we got into so many details.
So if.
And what is the development? Are we losing all of our trees? I mean, the reason people move to Sunset Acres and Plainville in general is for peace and quiet and the beauty of the community, and saying that that's not going to be affected, I, I find that difficult to believe.
I think I was pretty clear. If we can go back to the aerial, Joe, and I, and I'm not, I'm not working for the developers, so think of it, I'm just trying to lay it out.
I, I don't think you were that clear, but go ahead.
The first step is to, is to do the lot lines. So there's, the board, each board has their own jurisdiction. The jurisdiction in, in generally, is the planning board is for the development. This is to do the lot lines. However, before, if you can do another thing, it's this way, they want to create, they have to create a conforming lot. They can come back to this board for additional work on that lot, that's another hearing, so that's another alternate route they can take. Generally, we try and have new development go to the planning board, because that's what they look at. But this board can make a finding that, as I think it can, and again, the attorneys may disagree, that that buffer there is needed to protect everybody. They can't, obviously, they can't cut any of your trees, but it's needed there. But the planning board can also do that when they're reviewing a project. There's a row of trees there, which it appears there is, they could maybe say those have to stay or something. Or they could put up a fencing, or buffering, or more landscaping even, and it's there. That's typically what the planning board does. This board can make a determination, if they look this over, they hear the public input, and they decide that that land is necessary, it shouldn't be built on for anything, because the, the apartments are so noisy and so many people screaming and yelling out of there that it's bothering you people, then they could make a finding that, that that's the case, and they could probably deny this based on that. But until we have a public hearing, we don't know. And number two, I mean, it is route one, and we are, the town in general is trying to get development there, so I certainly don't discourage them from coming before the board to get the first, the first step done. But you do not have all the information here at this board meeting, and you probably won't, because they're not gonna go and design a project if they can't even get the lot lines.
Right, but you see what I'm saying? It's a slippery slope. Once you open it up, then you're going to lose, you're gonna lose your, you know, you're gonna lose the tree line, you're gonna lose.
And if the planning board.
Well, then, then, then it's wide open. They do what they want within, within this.
Well, not because of, not because of tonight, or because of this meeting.
Right. But with this not being opened up, that stops that.
So number one, I, I believe, I could be wrong, they can go and cut those trees down So number one, I believe, I could be wrong, they can go and cut those trees down tomorrow, and there's nothing that we can do about it. So that's...
Let me just say that, because you cannot cut a tree in Plainville in anticipation of a permit.
Yeah, but if there's no permit, if they get turned down, then they wouldn't have a permit, they could cut the trees down.
And my other question is, if you're looking at commercial development, why does it have to be here? I know that's a larger question. I do understand that, but if this is residential, and should remain that way...
It's zoned commercial. It's zoned commercial. And the reason it has to be there, it doesn't have to be, but any applicant has a right to come before the board and have a hearing. So you get a hearing, they get a hearing.
So in other words, you're saying it's commercial protected by a non-conforming lot? So if you change the non-conforming, then bang, it's commercial, go for it?
It's commercially zoned.
Right.
So you can do things that are in the commercial zone there, either by special permit or by right. And if they create a conforming lot, they could possibly, if it gets approval from the planning board, put something that's allowed in that zone on that lot. This is why they're doing this, this is the first step.
Right, so this is critical. For Sunset Acres.
I'm glad you showed up, because this is why I have all the care.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I appreciate it. It just was a little confusing, because there's a lot of language going on.
We like to just do easy ones, but this is...
I'd love to see it stay as it is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, let me see. Please, we need the light green.
My suggestion is to reject these boundary changes, because we are a residential area. And the change in that property line is not only going to change the traffic, it's totally violating drainage, life, animals that live there. It would just change our whole community altogether. Changing these boundary lines is...
Well, technically, changing the boundary lines has no impact, because they don't have a building permit to build anything. So, and all that's gonna be underneath the planning board.
You're going to okay this right?
I haven't decided.
Don't go there.
I haven't decided.
You're not gonna tell me?
I think we need names, too, right?
Yeah, what was your name, ma'am?
Mary Yankin.
Very funny. Lady in the red hair.
My question is...
Your name, please.
If Phase One is approved, and I understand that that does not affect us immediately, but if Phase One gets approved, do we have less leverage when Phase Two does happen? Because it's unlikely that it's gonna stay vacant for three years.
These are all special permits of the same level, so it would be a special permit in front of the planning board. So there'd be a posted hearing. They'd have to present elevations, exactly what the plan is, and then we need the input, lighting, traffic, all that stuff would come up.
Ray, I have a question on that. On District CB, aren't there some permitted uses that don't require a special permit?
I haven't heard, all I heard was a duplex is the only one that doesn't require any special permit.
No, there were, I listed the funeral home, child...
But that requires a special permit.
No, those are permitted uses.
Funeral home, you can put a funeral home in without drainage study or any of that stuff?
No, no, we would need site plan, most likely.
Okay.
That's not a special...
Not a special permit, so site...
Although if it goes over a certain size, it would trigger the community and water issues.
So the site plan would be discussing lighting, traffic?
Yes, and it also may require a special permit, even if it's permitted use, if it goes over 20 parking spaces, I think, or a certain size.
So the only thing that's 100% available to be done by right without any level of permitting is a duplex. You can just go pull a building permit. So there's still to be input, is my point from people. Go ahead, name, please.
Hi, I'm Lori Boskett. I live on the right-hand side, that very last house, and this scares me. But I have two questions, or one comment, first of all. Sometimes when you are coming out of there, we're all, you know, people over 55, when you're coming out of there, it's not always the easiest thing to get in and out. So you're talking about more traffic there, more possible problems with people getting hurt. But the other question, please forgive my ignorance, what makes a lot conforming and non-conforming? I don't have any idea what...
Yeah, the zoning, zoning file. First, you go to the zoning map, you determine what zone you're in. This is in the CB zone, and then there would be lines of frontage, area, different uses that could be done in there. So the conforming would be, in this case, 125 feet of frontage, 100 feet of width, and 20,000 square feet? Yeah, 20,000 square feet of area. So that's what a conforming lot is.
That's out of that?
I was trying, you're done.
Part of that is out of that, okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Name, sir?
Skip Donham, Sunset Acres. Did we go through this process...
I didn't say your name, I didn't understand it.
Pardon me?
What's your name?
Skip Donham.
Skip Donham, okay, thank you.
Sunset Acres. Did we go through this process last year, or the year before? These are the same people? These new people? You did this before, right?
I don't remember that, no.
Same parcel of land?
No.
No?
No.
The woods on Kylie is what you're thinking about.
Can you show us exactly the yellow line, exactly, from the highway back out again? I see...
So he's highlighting the apartment building.
Where's the property they want to buy? Where's the lot line? Where's it showing?
This is, there are three lots currently. This is the lot that the apartment building is on.
They own that, right?
They own that. They also own this piece right here.
The apartment.
Well, where the corner of the swimming pool is, goes into that other lot.
Yes.
They own this lot as well. And then there's a second party that owns a single-family house. And what they're looking to do, and hopefully I can draw this in a way, or show, is these people that own this single-family house are gonna trade roughly here, this land up here, for some land here, so that they end up with frontage. But they also end up, by moving this line over a bit, the apartment building owners end up with enough frontage and width to reach this back lot, and it creates one now buildable lot in a CB district. Hopefully, I explained that in a way that's understandable.
Solid line comes down, and it goes back up again.
I'm sorry?
Solid yellow line goes down, comes down, and then goes back up again.
In this here?
Yes.
That's your lot line? That's the Sunset Acres lot line?
Yes.
What's gonna become buildable?
Pardon?
What becomes buildable when you move the line?
Sorry.
So if anyone wants to take a look up here, the plot plan on the left is what's existing now, I believe. On the right is what's proposed.
How do we get those? Do those PDFs somewhere?
I did those on my own.
It's buildable where the 55 is.
Could you send that?
So once they make that...
Yeah, yeah, I should be able to.
700-foot strip.
But I have to say this again. I started by saying that if you grant this, they can then go to the next step. If you don't agree to this, it stays, essentially, it stops.
No, they could apply for another...
Okay, okay, but...
Until the next 200 feet.
Well, honey, I just want to be clear on that. If you say yes to this, it opens it up. If you say no, they have to go back to the drawing board and start again, and they can appeal again, and the same process will kick on again. Right? Is that a true statement?
If you were to turn it down, then they'd come back with other proposals, huh?
So it is a true statement? Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Or they can go to court and appeal with the decision. Or they can go to court and appeal with the decision.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Where is the motel there, on the map?
Number five.
Number five, is where the motel is?
Yes.
I see the top, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Patrick, did you want to explain something?
I didn't know, to... Just for these purposes, and I know it's kind of tough to read, but one of the board members has it color-coded, it's a little... It's really confusing. This is the current layout. I represent John. John owns blue and pink. Blue and pink are basically one lot right now. This is, in essence, actually respectfully, a little not aligned. But this is what would be... That's the proposed lot, somebody's line of questioning. The pink actually goes down a little, this blue strip is actually pink. But that basically shows you the difference in what it looks like.
This is really, I mean, for obvious reasons, we're concerned with our residential community. I understand that that area is zoned commercial, we get that. We are residences, so that's where our mindset is.
The zoning board, maybe I'm losing my mind. Last year or something, they talked about this property or something, they were gonna have some kind of an entrance put in by the motel. They were gonna give a right of way to go in there.
That was not in front of this board.
Pardon me?
It was not in front of this board.
I didn't hear you.
It was not in front of this board.
Different board, I guess.
Oh, different board, okay. Because I remember they were gonna do something.
Okay, so the applicant is saying that they have not come up for any... Chris, obviously, works with all the boards and hasn't seen it, so... Yeah, I think it'd be useful to have the applicant.
I'm trying to...
Just said your name, sir, please. Could I have your name, please?
John Slime, the manager.
Okay, thank you.
I understand you guys want to see what I'm gonna do, and I'm happy to offer this up to you. If I build something bigger than 1,000 square feet, I have to come back, and you guys would be able to come and correct.
Go to planning board.
And you'd be able to come again and see what I'm doing and get a rule.
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely.
Can I add to that? Would we be notified? I thought all of the others had to be notified when we're not before any board.
So, no, that's not true. I think site plan review, you don't need to go to all butters, if it's only site plan review.
I mean, you said we didn't have to be notified for this one, but we weren't notified for April either.
Okay, let's get, the notification thing is a seriously important function of this board. Everybody was notified for the April 16th meeting. At that meeting...
Not the people that own the mobile homes.
Well, the owner of the mobile home park was.
Yes. I have, everyone is required to be, for a special permit, everyone within 300 feet of the property lines has to receive notice.
Okay, I'm listening to 300 feet.
And I have, let me just finish. And I have page two of a three-page list of the abutters, and right there at the bottom of page three is Sunset Acres Residence Association, Inc., Bristol South, E.O. Box 77, Rainham, Mass. So I don't know who picks up the mail, but the notice was sent...
For the April meeting, right?
Well, the April meeting, because there weren't enough members of the zoning board here, the meeting was opened and continued to tonight, but there was no one in the audience for that, as a result of that notice. Well, the notice was sent out, I...
Okay, so just to make, be clear on the notice, excuse me, excuse me, let's try to pay attention to this, we're not here all night. So the notice goes to the owner of the real estate. That's Sunset Acres, so they got...
It's still so.
Okay, well, it went to your association. If that's not the accurate address, that needs to be changed at the time.
That's the management office address.
Did it get mailed to the board or the manager?
Yeah, John has to notify.
They sent the notice, this is on us. We need to remedy the notice, getting it to our hands.
You gotta send the notice.
They sent the notice.
We sent the notice according to Massachusetts state law, how you do it. Which is very important to us, because you cannot have a hearing and function as a meeting and do it if you don't do the proper notice. So it's a very careful procedure that gets done, to do that. So if somebody doesn't, if somebody in management doesn't pass that along to the residents, we can't control that. And the residents, you know, the property is owned by your association, and the people live there.
So I was wondering, I thought it was you guys that sent the notice down.
We sent it to... Let's try to stay clear here. We sent it to the owner of the real estate. The owner of the real estate.
Yeah, after them, it's not a dad situation.
I'm sorry, that didn't happen. That's not on our plate, unfortunately. You want to talk again? Yeah, we'll go get to you, yeah.
I was saying, I can understand that you guys want to know what I'm gonna do, and I'm happy to, you know, I don't know if it's a condition or what, but I'm going to build something bigger than 1,000 square feet, which would trigger a planning review. You guys should be entitled to look back and see what I'm doing, and make any suggestions then, but I'm just happy to say that, like, I'll build something bigger than 1,000 square feet, that'll trigger me back in front of the planning board or one of the other boards.
What scares me is the something. We don't know what something means.
Well, I was gonna do self-storage, this was two years ago, and then if you know where the New Seasons Gas Station is in North Abwar, they build in 500 units over there, so that kind of like, my plan out to do that, because I was, I'm short for storage for the tenants in this building, and I candidly thought, like, maybe you guys would be good self-storage candidates, like, I know you have in fact housing, and maybe storage is tight, so I was thinking about, you know, catering to your guys' needs, like, if you guys needed storage. But again, a mile down the road, they've built four or 500 units, so I kind of changed my plan. So I really don't know what I'm gonna build, but I will say I'm gonna build something bigger than 1,000 square feet, so that, you know, you said that something, you'll know what something is, and I know, because I'll be back in front of the planning board, and you guys will be able to see what it is.
I know this is out of turn, but it would be great if we could have a conversation where it's us, you know, just, I appreciate all the work that they're doing here, but, you know, we are, again, this is what you get after three hours' notice. If we have another meeting with that, with everybody knows about it, there's 225 residence homes in there. You're gonna have five times as many people come to the next meeting. And we don't want to, you know, man, we don't want to do that to you, just...
I don't want them to do that, I tell you.
I know, well...
Either way, it's going to be developed, you're losing all the green, either way, no matter what.
I was gonna ask, so you guys are speaking, I'll talk to the lady in the back, then.
I'd like to speak of the human condition. I'm thoroughly determined of this. I don't think we're trying right, but we have seniors, we're all seniors. Some of us are in our 80s and 90s, some are in wheelchairs. We all have sleep problems. We all hear noises. We moved here so that we would have peace and quiet and serenity. I'm fortunate, I have a backyard that's full of trees, but those people up there, if they take some of those trees down, that's not good oxygen-wise, that's not good for birds, girls, but mainly the people that are walking around in walkers, wheelchairs. We came here for peace and quiet, but to put up something, and we don't know what this something is, is frightening.
Do you want to clarify something, Patrick, or...
No, I thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, ma'am.
Brenda Watkins on Sunset Acres. I wholeheartedly agree with the fact that you own this land and you have a perfect right to build on it. If we could have a buffer zone between the two with whatever, but today, we just want to change the lot line, the way that the lot is. I'm more concerned about what's gonna happen with proposed building of housing back there. Right now, you can't get a permit for building a house here in Plainville because of the water situation. So...
I'm not a little house there.
No, no, I know you're a little house there. But changing the lot line would make a more squared-off lot for you, correct?
Well, you want to create, they want to create three separate lots in here, so that the people at number 11...
What do you mean by three separate lots?
Three, so you got Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3. So Lot 1 would be the existing apartment building.
Yeah.
Lot 2 in the middle, it's kind of a dogleg lot, would be the new lot. And then Lot 3 would be the people that live, are they, by any chance, 11? Oh, you're the 11 people. So, yeah, so now their lot gets a little bigger, and they lose a little bit of land in exchange for that, but the frontage gets bigger.
So on this map up here, where the 56 is, down by the road and...
Oops, I'm sorry. 56.
Down at the very bottom.
Oh, yeah.
I see a house. Now, I thought it was gonna go cut that corner, make that pie shape.
It is.
Right. It would be approximately, the new line would be approximately here.
Just for the house.
That goes to the house, and then they're trading this back area approximately along this line that goes over to this lot.
So that would actually pretty much squares off. Okay, I understand that. I'm not opposed.
So Brenda, there would be another lot line going from like, where the, closer to the driveway back, is Joe's pointing right there, something like that.
So there would be two ways in and out, a way in and a way out.
There'd be a separate entrance for the new, it would still only, probably only one entrance, but that would be something for the next board to review.
Okay.
See what, maybe they want to do something.
I understand. Thank you, Chris.
Sure, one second, I'm gonna let Patrick...
Just on one response, which we've heard, and again, because, you know, he's not certain what he's gonna do, but there's very real potential that what he would propose there wouldn't cut the trees down, but would actually add to the buffer. So, again, we're not there yet, we don't know what that site is gonna look like, and we're open to conversations, but there are ways that something like that could be beneficial. We don't know how the lens, I don't know what those trees are, I have lived nearby and seen it, but very well, you know, a project like this, it's not atypical to improve something on that way. It's not a promise, I'm not trying to lead anybody on, but we don't know what is going to happen there, and it is gonna be a level of review, so it's not just us determining through a site plan or special permit that would come next of, okay, sure, this is what we want to do, we get to do it. Now, the planning board hears it, and they know what happens at a hearing like this, the subject to it, if it gets approved, that it was, well, a lot of butters, you know, have some concerns about what the use is gonna be, and it will be an opportunity, and at that time, you know, if we can increase the buffer and things of that nature, that would be beneficial to the butters. and things of that nature, that would be beneficial to the abutters, then that can be discussed, and that, again, just add into the dialogue of how this proceeds.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Your name, please.
Do you happen to know?
Your name, please, sir.
Oh, Abraham Basamajri, just call me Ab.
Thanks.
And, um, you know, a lot of towns, and I don't know all the plans, there was a question of you folks, and I don't know if the planning board answers this or you all know the rule, when someone develops a lot, and it's full of trees or whatever, they can only cut, so you have to, no matter what, usually about twenty-five percent of it has green space, or it is a green.
Well, there could, there could be some sort of green space in there, but it's not a set rule that you have to leave it, it's, but it's all part of the discussion on a site plan approval.
'Cause I've been, like, in New Hampshire, I know one time my dad was doing a project, twenty-five percent, you gotta leave twenty-five percent of trees.
Yep, yep.
So I'll just say, you didn't, you don't have rules.
But it's certainly open to discussion with, with the developer.
And then, again, clarification, if you, this is why everybody's here upset, is, once that line is moved, it does open it up to anything he can do that does not require you guys special permit. It's up to only a thousand square feet, something like that, and he's allowed to do funeral home, this, that, and the other, which no one's gonna build only a thousand square foot one, but. So most likely, he's gonna have to move forward to do a special permit, and then, like, some of the people here are, like, you're gonna have two hundred-something people down here to discuss and argue and do whatever as to what his plans are, right? But the first, if he never gets that line moved, which is pretty obvious to most of the here, that's kinda why we're all like, how about we just leave it alone, you know? Sorry that gentleman can't do more developing and have more fun with his land, but that's, so, I, I think that's about all I'm trying to point out, is this is why everyone's so adamantly kind of against the idea. And, and then vice versa, is it, is glad, I think you said, first you said it's just a two-family could go in, no, without a permit or just a special. There's a lot of things that can go in there by just the planning board approving what he wants, without all of us getting involved.
Okay, so my comment on that was, by right, that you could, you could have this lot, you go to the building inspector and get a building permit. Anything other than the duplex is gonna require planning board review.
Planning board, right.
Yeah, anything.
Is that, are there, but are there discussions open to all of us saying, no, we don't like what you're, okay?
Be the same thing, you get notified, we send to the office, hopefully they distribute it this time, and they, um, you know, it would be the same type of thing. And then, but they'd be discussing, what we're discussing is frontage and lot width and area and stuff like that, where that, that type of application would be specifically the building, the lighting, the tree cutting, the, uh, the noise factor. All of those things will be up for discussion.
Just, just a note, our bylaws in most municipalities, they're structured to be beneficial and favorable to the Plainville. So, we, we try to do what's best for the, the community.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. But everyone's got an opinion about what's best.
Okay, any other board members have questions or clarifications, or?
I have a final comment, I would, uh, ought to make a suggestion, um, for a condition of approval, and, um, um, I don't know if would make people in this room happy, but I think that as far as I'm concerned, um, if it was accepted, if it was, if it could be done, it would get me to yes, okay? First of all, I'm gonna say it again, that, um, my understanding from this discussion is that there are special permits that have a certain amount of review, and then if there isn't a special permit, there's a site plan, which also has a review, but that review isn't as stringent, okay? It's not as, it's, is, it's not as, as powerful, using that word.
Not discretionary.
What?
Not discretionary.
It's not discretionary.
So for instance, you can generally turn something down for a wider range of reasons than a site plan can be turned down. A site plan has to be turned down because the lighting's no good, or the landscaping's no good, or the access isn't safe.
Okay, so my question is, as far as neighborhood protections go, okay? What's the best, the better, uh, scenario for making sure the neighborhood impacts are protected? Is it, is it the special permit review, or is it the site plan review?
You have, well, the special permit's a higher hurdle.
Thank you.
Variance is the highest hurdle.
Thank you.
Special permit.
So, so then, let me just.
But those, all the issues that have been brought up tonight, noise, lighting.
Right.
Access, it's all under the site plan review.
It's not our purview.
Right. So that point here is that, the plan, I'm, I'm comfortable the planning board is exceptional at, um, addressing neighborhood impacts. They're great, however, if the planning board may have less, less leverage, if the, if the development is a permitted use versus if it's a site permit. Again, the permitted uses are, that I, just off the top of my head here, um, schools, um.
So you're getting schools, or?
Yeah.
Those seem pretty quiet.
I am, I am.
General home seems pretty quiet to me.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, let's see, childcare centers, businesses retail, businesses wholesale, business offices, restaurant indoors, um, and schools. So those are some examples where the, the review would be as, as regimented. So my proposed condition of approval is any construction on this lot would be subject to a special permit review by the planning board, regardless of whether it is a permitted use or needs a special permit.
Not sure we can, I don't think we can do that.
No, can't do that.
Can't do that?
No.
'Cause we're, what you're doing is creating the bylaw without the town meeting, you're, you're changing, I mean, there's other things we can do that, that.
Right. But, but you see what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here, is what I'm trying to get at is, we could walk away feeling that, that the neighbors have got the maximum protection for a subsequent view by, by somebody who's gonna make sure that, but let's face it, we've seen it before on this committee. Uh, you know, we don't want you to, you know, the, the abutters don't want you to cut down these trees, they need a fence. Uh, what about the hours of operation? Uh, tho, those lights, uh, should be, um, pointed down, so there's no ambient lighting, on and on and on. We, we know, we've seen these, we've had conditions of approval that go six, seven, eight, nine conditions of approval. And my question here is, you know, how can we, as a board, making sure that we maximize the protection from the neighborhood?
Can I comment? So Brenda, Brenda and I had talked about this probably a year ago.
Yeah.
And your big concern was you wanted a fence. And I had told you.
Just a buffer between the property and, and us.
So, so between the property and you, you wanted an eight-foot fence, I think it was, solid fence all the way down there.
That's one opinion.
No, I, can I just finish?
You can, but you need to know that's one opinion.
Okay, please let him.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to delineate what the board can do versus what they can't do. So they can clearly, not clearly, but one option is to turn it down. Another option, Rick suggested, is beyond what we can do. What we can do, for instance, if, and I'm just throwing it out so the board has options to talk about, um, is the eight-foot fence, for instance, I think, and again, I got two attorneys here, I think we could probably condition this that an eight-foot fence be put along the property line between everywhere at the butts. Do you think that's a legitimate condition that we could do as part of this hearing?
I think it's legit, yeah, I would like to have aside with the client.
I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just suggesting that there are intermediates between one extreme and the other extreme, and that might be something that would be allowed. Now, I don't know if the board wants to do it or the neighbors want to do it, but.
Well, I mean, in that same vein, you could, you could say there's no, that there's no lighting from that backside, or no doors on that backside.
We want the trees.
Eight-foot fence isn't gonna do what, what that many trees does. That's, that's, no.
So, okay, Mr. Dugan, make a comment.
You wanna take, you wanna take him aside for a minute, or?
He suggests that perhaps the board can make a condition, that the planning board must have the input of Sunset Acres, you know, before they approve any site plan.
They are gonna have it.
All of the common reasons you are, didn't know what else to hold on, because if you get down, that forehead, you do it, but somebody else. But let's say that happens again, nobody knows if the site plan approved, then a condition that this board makes to the planning board, if you get it, that needs to be blacklisted.
I don't think that's something we can do.
I think that's built into the process already.
That's not, I don't think that's a reasonable condition to, or enforceable, I mean.
I'm happy to put a condition on there for, for fence or, or vegetation, whatever, whatever you guys.
What about saving the trees?
I'm happy, I, I mean, I don't know what's back.
I haven't seen that, I don't know what they look like.
I know it's like shrubs and stuff, I can't, maybe it's nice, where do I invite you?
I have, I have no idea. What are the trees like?
Uh, it really would be Jones.
The ones along the three eighty-six.
I did a site view, walked through today, and this is what I saw. If you're going straight back, okay, you'll hit a fence where the Sunset Acres. What you see is you see this, almost like, um, brush, okay? Small stuff, nuisance stuff to the, to the owner's side, and all the substantial trees, okay? That you'd be afraid to be cut are on the Sunset Acres side of the fence. Now, turn left and go up towards behind the, um, um, the motel, okay? Once you get past that in-ground pool, what you get is dense trees, okay? I didn't wanna walk it, 'cause I had shorts on, okay? So it's really dense stuff, and if you're talking, and you have to, based on this conceptual twelve-thousand-square-foot commercial building, okay? There's the in-ground pool and the, and the, the, um, tree line is around here, you'd have to cut down some of those trees for this footprint to be put in. And so if there's any serious trees that are gonna be cut down, assuming that the conceptual twelve-thousand-square-foot commercial building footprint is gonna be holding true, would be the section that goes from the, um, the indoor pool, I'm sorry, the, the in-ground pool to all the way behind, uh, the, um, motel. So, that's what I saw.
But if, if nothing happens, if nothing happens, what owns that property could cut down the trees today? And, and they're gone, if, if the trees are the issues, there's nothing that can preserve those trees if an owner of that property wanted to cut them down now.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't know what's going in there.
Technically, it's anticipation.
Anticipation.
This would have to be over.
That's what I mean, I, I, so we're worried about, or the concern is about something that, there's not enough information, and the reality is something that goes in there could be better than the alternative of someone who could just clear-cut land for their own use, because they own it and they can do it.
That's not, that, that's absurd.
How is that absurd?
People aren't just gonna start cutting down trees for no reason, they're gonna cut it, they're gonna cut it down to build something, and without the lot permits, you're, you're not gonna see the construction. They're not just gonna cut it down for no reason.
So you're speaking for the homeowners now?
We consider a significant chunk of those trees.
So, so, for instance.
But, but it's guaranteed if it gets developed that things will be cut down.
We have a written, we, didn't we, when we wrote up something in that says nearby, just those people? They can't build on the lot for sale.
Okay, let's, let's, excuse me, excuse me, can we run it through the board here, so we understand what you're talking about? Just to state your name and just.
Um, when we, uh, you know, when he came to us to buy the land, we also didn't want all the trees cut down. We considered cutting some down, get increased the size of our backyard, it's small, but we asked to have something written in to the contract saying that he was not going to be allowed to build on that, I think that's how we have it written, and that we still have use of the land. So we are still, you know, they own it, we still have use of the land, and they cannot build on that. And what are we doing here?
What, what part of the land are you talking about?
You're talking about here?
That, see where he is, see where he's, like, way in the little back area?
That won't be touched.
So why are you buying that?
Well, it's just parcel A, that's all, it's not, not where the building is proposed.
Again, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Clarification, so.
Okay, can we let the attorney clarify this thing, so we don't?
I believe a portion of the drive aisle, there wouldn't be any structure on it, a portion, so we need the land because a portion of the drive aisle, there's a second drive aisle there, that would cross the back of what's shown as lot four there, um, but it is true that there would be no structure on it. So, and we, we need the land to make it enforce.
So essentially, from that stone wall to the right, you're not gonna, this, this call it the former lot line?
Yeah, so you see, the drive aisle is shown on here, if, uh, you have.
Yeah, no, I see the drive aisle for the.
So that, that clip there, that, that's the parcel A.
Yeah, but you're saying a structure, not a driveway.
Exactly, no structure, and barely just, I mean, however many square feet that is, it probably amounts to hundred, two hundred square feet of improved A, man, over that land, with nothing else planned to be done back there.
So that document could be submitted to the board, and that would be, at that point, a reasonable condition to, if this, yeah, if this is approved?
Yeah, I would, I mean, it's a private agreement between the parties, and it would become a public document, I, I just, the caveat that I'd have to give it some consideration for, I mean, conceptually, I, I think I'd, I'd be okay with that.
It seems, seems like it will protect about half the property, that would be something that might be important to the board and their considerations.
At the rear of that property there.
I would think that would be a big.
Well, I'm hearing all of that property, that entire, you know, stone wall.
Well, they need property, they said, right?
Other than the driveway is the only thing that's an infringement.
I'm sorry?
Other than the driveway is the only thing in there.
What we have conceptually here is, um, just the, uh, right, just the driveway. So.
So it's not a prohibition of cutting trees, it's a prohibition of building a structure? I haven't seen the agreement, so.
Yeah, I'd have to review, I know there was discussion on that, what we have for language in there, and I, I think John is conceptual, okay with that. You weren't, really, we, there was never been any conceptual plan to build in there. So.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll have it further, 'cause it needs some clarification, though, is there a proposed, I don't know, you know, I, I, on a quick, uh, response, I don't wanna agree to submit a privately agreement between the parties, especially with the other attorney that I'm here. Everybody should have a chance to review the agreement and then say, okay, it's okay, it's.
I'm just trying, anything that's in your favor, I'm just trying.
Understood, and I, and I think we're open to that, and that's part of the dialogue here, that there probably is no intention, uh, or we have it in the agreement, that.
Yeah, I'm happy to submit the agreement, and they have support on it, but it's a business too, so. I, I, I don't have a problem with the issues that the board is addressing, actually, rebuilding the site trees and all that, some parts of the agreement, probably should be made confidential with respect to the price of those, you know, like that.
I don't think we need that information, but if, but if you're gonna be protecting part of the land anyways, that might sway the board in their opinion. And, and, and if we can mimic that language in a decision and you're okay with that, that might help your case, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we almost don't need the agreement, we just need them to agree to.
Yeah, we just need, uh, the limits, it was short on the plan, actually, you need to show.
Just let this play out first, we'll get to you, I'll get to you, yeah. You all set, Patrick?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for telling us that that section is in the agreement. So what that leaves is, where could you build the structure? Did you show us on this map where you could then build the structure?
Right where.
If this were to be granted?
Right where you're showing it, would be.
I don't know if they have that document.
Okay.
If you go, the other plan, that, are you able to go to the PDF?
Oh, yeah.
No, actually, that, that's not a good visual for us.
See, see the square right there that says pool? That would be better, yeah, the pool's actually, that's a pool.
And then it says conceptual twelve-thousand-square-foot building, that's, that's kind of the building area.
Can we see it on the graphic that shows where?
They can't super in a public, that.
You don't have to super, you just have to drag them outside.
See the pool?
We see the pool.
So picture a building over the pool.
This, this, do you see the pool on that plan on the?
So that's where you could build the structure?
Yeah.
Right at the corner of the pool.
Thank you.
These two plans are at slightly different angles, so that's also probably causing some confusion.
So would a, would a tree line be more protective than, than a fence? I mean, it's almost like if you put a fence in, you've gotta cut trees down in order to put the.
That's ugly.
The posts in.
Quick question, does that mean the pool, you're gonna get rid of the pool if you did wanna build?
Pool's abandoned anyway, isn't it?
Oh, it already is abandoned, okay.
I think so.
That is bad.
Yeah. It's a hole in the ground.
Design something, use a line of trees.
Yeah, the pool's gonna go with the person who built it.
Yeah, so if we had a proposal from the applicant to have a fence and ten-foot tree line, something like that, would be. Yeah, I'd be, I'm not saying that we're agreeing to that, of, giving you a chance to offer that.
I'm certainly not, like, in here, I'm trying to be flexible with everybody's concerns, if that would make everybody happy, then I'd be happy with you, just, you know.
The writers, someone ever said they didn't want a fence?
I, I just, for a person that prefers a tree line, just a fence to me is hideous, just wondering.
What about both?
Both is perfect. Both is perfect. And again, that's just one opinion. That's, you're right. So that's my opinion.
Well, I'm throwing up, you're here. This is our chance to get your.
Well, you know what? It sounds like you're offering both.
I'm not offering anything. I'm just trying, I'm, I'm giving you some examples. He's offering both, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm offering both.
But, but the trouble is the trees will be lower than the fence, you understand, right? So probably, you're not going to put an eight-foot tree.
Well, not if he maintains the, the thick, I've been out there, but I didn't really notice the thickness of the thing. He can almost leave what's there.
Well, Rick said that the first, the part that looks green on here, from what Rick said, it sounds like there's more shrubs?
Yes, but then over to the left corner there, it's thicker.
So you could plant trees along that side, maybe, and leave the shrub? I don't know.
So how do we determine that type of writing to make sure that it gets done that way in the future?
So I think it sounds like we need to continue this. Number one.
Yeah, no, I want to continue this.
So, so I'm, I'm seeing conditions here. Number one, I could see a plan. We don't need your, your private details, but there could be a line drawn on the plan that shows the areas that aren't going to be disturbed. Based, basically based on your thing. That's just a line. It can show, we can refer to it. This area will be driveway. This area won't be touched by structures, or we left vegetated, whatever. That's a reasonable condition. Would you agree?
Yeah, we could show it on the plan, and it could be in the form of an easement or restricted covenant.
But we can refer to it in our decision on the plan. So, so we can work on that. So that's not item number one. Item number two is the fence, eight-foot fence. You mentioned before that was okay. You wouldn't need it on the areas where they're not going to disturb the land, I suppose, but in those areas where, where it's going to be disturbed, you would put an eight-foot fence along the boundary of the Mobile Home Park.
Did I, was, did I say about the fence, is there a fence back there already?
There's a chain link fence that is in, that is on the property of the Sunset Acres. So.
I presume that Sunset Acres.
Yeah, but they want something that's solid.
I would guess you, you want an eight-foot vinyl fence, white, I assume, that'll last, it'll be solid. If, if. I'm just, I'm just, you know, a wooden fence will, will fall apart over the years. You've got a chain link fence that probably looks like junk. So a vinyl fence would be the best. So that's, that's another item we can discuss. And nobody's voting on anything. I'm just throwing things out here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and the whole purpose of this type of discussion is to give the applicant, and we're going to continue this, so it'll be Thursday.
And you will not get a notice.
We'll not get a notice.
Back next month.
We're moving the date tonight. The, but these are the kinds of things that they, hearing your discussion, and, and your, how you laid out this thing, which we had no idea about, the, these are the kinds of things they can come back with that could satisfy, hopefully.
Well, the both of us.
And I would think.
The third thing would be a planting, a planting plan along the fence.
Yeah.
Which I think Joe can go out there and meet with them on-site and determine where's, what's appropriate. You can come up with some kind of a planting plan along the fence that would be, you could work on before the next meeting. And that would show on the plans too as a reasonable condition?
For landscaping or planting.
Along, just along the fence. There's some areas you don't need it, some areas you do need it. I, I think you probably need to go out on the site and decide what you want to do.
Yeah, we'll talk to it next time if it was too big or something.
And the other thing that would really take a lot of the anxiety out of this is determining what you're going to do. Because then we could do, even though it's not part of our thing, but, you know, that's, that's where we're getting feedback. It's a mystery.
I don't think we can condition that, though.
No, we can't. But that could be your way to get to.
But they can change, they can change their mind. Well.
Uh, once a month.
Next is June 18th, I believe, is the next.
Got a question about that? The original application was March 20th, as of today. It's been 62 days. Do we have to get this thing settled in '65?
Well, if they agree to the continuance, then I think.
They'll, they'll sign the continuance form for the public hearing. I think it's, the time is for the close of the public hearing, which we won't, won't close tonight. We'll have to sign the extension request for the public hearing anyways.
Okay.
So I think that's.
Good point, though.
Joe has the forms.
That's how we get around, knock around it.
Right.
I don't even think we, I think it's the deadline's for the close of the public hearing, isn't it, for a special permit? So I think this isn't a variance. It's, it's a special permit. So a variance has different deadlines than a special.
Good, good.
And I'm, I'm retired, so I don't remember any of these numbers anymore.
I just have one last thing.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
I think, I don't think any one of us that live in Sunset Acres want this to change at all. So just take into consideration, please, people that live there, we're happy with the way it is. I know he has a right to do what he has to do, and I know some people are probably thinking that I'm wrong. But I really feel strongly about this. I don't want to see those trees go. I don't want to see a building put there. I don't want to see more traffic on my street. I don't want any of this.
No, it is his property.
I get it.
You wanted to expand your Sunset Acres, then you could apply to do that.
And I think maybe some others too.
One more question. One more question. The people who want to purchase the property, the people who want to purchase the property, were they here before in front of the board, last year or the year before?
No.
They weren't. It was somebody else that wanted to purchase it.
I have no idea. It wasn't in front of this board, and it wasn't in front of the planning boards.
It was from another board then, because I was here. I remember they wanted to purchase.
Chris has been tracking all the boards in this town for years, so if he doesn't see this.
Yeah, you know what I think it was? I think it had to do with storage. You were talking about it, but I don't know if it was any owners or something, because I was at that same meeting, as you know. So it's not absolutely nuts. I don't know if it was here. I don't know with the planning. I don't know. Maybe it was when you were going over budget.
I think it may have been.
The town meeting.
We talked about town meeting, and one of the, and one of the changes was whether self-storage would be allowed on Route 1. And that was, that was a public hearing you may have attended. That was probably before the planning board and the selectmen.
And there was a lot of conversation.
Generally, generally about self-storage on Route 1. It wasn't specifically for this site. It was for, you know, the, the street.
And some people from Sunset Acres were at that, so I do, I want you to know, he's not crazy, because I was there too, but I, it had nothing to do with you guys. Okay, it was a totally separate thing. But it was on storage.
Okay, I think we've given good feedback to the applicant and their representatives, and I'd like to ask for a motion to continue this.
Do we need a motion for both?
I would say.
As long as the motion addresses both.
You can keep, put it in one motion.
I'll make a motion to continue both the public hearings for 11 Washington Street and 15 Washington Street. To, second?
January 18th.
June 18th.
I'm sorry. We want to do it this year.
I want to put it off. I'll be out of here by then.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that, that's your notice. June 18th.
That'll be six o'clock again. Are you still on my job?
It has to be six o'clock here. You will not receive a notice. It will be on the agenda both of the times.
Yeah, it's on the weather list.
Oh, June 18th, June 18th, I'm sorry. No, I don't see that there's need to continue because we have, we don't call it a public hearing. We're okay.
You don't have many of these.
Thank you.
You don't have many of these.
Jeez, I miss this.
You can't leave, Rick. You're minutes to this thing. Ricky's coming back with the bathroom.
We can't run out of here early.
Let me just stretch my legs. I'm going to recycle this, but my, my knees are locked. And I'm pulling. I know what you're trying to say. You're going to come hit me. No, I know. It's like scratching on it. Yeah, thank you.
I can't. I, that comes from the assessors. The assessors actually make up the abutters list, so that's, that's who is the recorded owner, assumed by deed.
Yeah, we are. It's resident owned.
But you must have the management. I'll show you the, just so. This is the address that was provided. Actually, two notices went, one for each application. I don't know who's picking up the mail, but.
Well, this, Bristol South, is, is in Ram.
Right.
And they, it's a big company, but they have no idea that this is going.
Well, if I could show you what the notice is.
I'll be here. I'll be here. I just check my, my calendar, make sure I am going on vacation, but, but not. I'll, I'll be going the 20th to the 23rd, so.
I'll go to the Board of Assessors.
Little bit of homework if you want to approve minutes.
I think Rick, Rick, what's the bathroom, I think, at the. All right, Brenda.
They also get the business.
Just thirty-seven minutes. Minutes look good to me in rhythm. Motion.
Any comments on that, or?
A little more. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 19th, 2023, and April 16th, 2024. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. Agent update.
You guys want to fight over who gives that update?
I don't know.
I'm not the agent anymore. It's you.
Joe, do we have an update?
And I think we can release this for public, for public knowledge. They have hired a new planner.
Oh, really?
Who, Mike, I believe his last name's Moran. He is the current town administrator in Dayton.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so he'll be starting June 24th. That's why I wanted to get this to January, so I'm out of here.
Yeah, right, right, exactly, exactly.
Just ain't until October, right?
Oh, I hope. I hope this guy's a quick learner, because as soon as I can pass up this stuff.
Oh, come on, you're having fun doing this.
You miss us, Joe?
How can we miss you if you never really go?
All right, I don't know if I put this back together the way I was, but.
Was there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We're done, yeah.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go Celtics.
Stay tonight?
Yep.